Good evening. Today is Thursday, February 27, 2025. Welcome, everyone, to our regular city council meeting in council chambers. Tonight, we will have an executive session, RE pending litigation, prior to our adjournment this evening. With that, I will call the meeting to order, and we will start off by welcoming Pastor Dan Doty from First Congressional Church here in Talmadge, where he will give us our opening prayer and then follow that with a brief presentation.
Would you join your heart with mine in prayer this evening? Gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for the gift of this day, for this time to be together. Oh, God, we give you thanks for these civil servants and city leaders who gathered this evening. We give you thanks that they rise every day to do what they can to make this city a better place to live. So surround them in this time, bless their work together, their deliberations, the decisions they make. We give you thanks for this beautiful city in which to live, to call home, and for the ways that we, as citizens, can also participate in making it a better place every day. Continue to surround us with your presence throughout this evening, and when our time here is over, see us all safely home this evening. We ask this in your most holy name. Amen. Go ahead and be seated. Are we going to do the pledge first, or?
Let's do the pledge, then we'll do the presentation. Do we have the... Did we have a pledge? Okay. We did not have... Okay. I'll lead us all. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I ask for just a few moments to tell you that First Congressional Church is developing a church-to-church partnership with a German church in Henin, Germany, which I'll tell you is near the town of Schwerte, which you won't know, and maybe even Dortmund, which might not pinpoint it for you, but it's in the area of Germany where Dusseldorf, Cologne, and Bonn are at. I did send a picture along, if I could have that. We are starting a church-to-church partnership with the Johannes Kirche, and I was there last fall to be and worship with them and to meet their pastor, Christina, and we took the picture. So this is me and Pastor Christina. I presented them with a bicentennial plate from the First Congressional Church, but we're standing in the Johannes Kirche, which was built in the year 1150. So I'm pretty sure they have nails in their door much older than our entire country. So I felt a little ridiculous, but yet they were very gracious to accept this gift, knowing that we are a much younger country than Germany. Two German friends from this congregation are here, if you will stand up. Marco Brost and Jonah Kretzler are here. The first thing we do with our partnership is we're going to develop a youth exchange program where we'll send a group of American youth to Germany for two weeks, and we'll host a group from Germany. It is not just a First Congressional Church. If you have folks in the city with students in the high school or early college, we'd love to have them talk with us about this particular partnership. We have fun things, we learn from each other, we stay in German homes, they stay in American homes. We've been to Berlin, we've been to Bonn, we've been to Cologne, we've been to many of the historical, we've been to concentration camps, so it's a wonderful experience for our youth. So if anybody has any youth and those are interested, I just wanted you to meet Marco and Jonah and to get to know that the First Congressional Church is starting this program with our international partners in Germany. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we'll move to our roll call this evening. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus.
Here.
Christine Sippa.
Here.
Jessica Epstein.
Here.
Mary Gutman.
Here.
Donald Pavlik.
Here.
Ted Roy.
Here.
Nick Rubino.
Here.
All right. Thank you. We are all here this evening. Moving along to item four, it's correcting and adopting the previous meeting minutes from February 13, 2025, council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
One second. I think, when I looked at it, I think the first line said February 27, if you go back and look at it real quick. And so these are...
We'll do the... Let's do the motion in a second, and we'll have discussion.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt the meeting minutes as presented. Please continue with your discussion.
Just on the first line, it says you called the order on February 27, but it was February 13 meeting minutes, if I'm right on that.
It says January 23, and these are the February 13 minutes.
Yeah. I mean, that's not a big deal, but just hypo.
Oh, I see. Thank you. Okay, I see. In item one on the actual minutes, the date of the meeting needs corrected to reflect February 13, 2025. All right. So we'll note that and have that corrected before that is uploaded. Any other discussion on the minutes? All right. Thank you for that observation. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes. Meeting minutes are adopted by a vote of seven to zero with one amendment. Moving on to financial reports, tonight we have none. Public hearings, we have none. Community input, this is the time in the agenda where, if anybody in the audience would like to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight, you may come to the podium and have two minutes to speak. Item eight, agenda additions. I'd like to welcome Chief Bohan this evening to the podium, where we'll be recognizing Sergeant Stover for the Distinguished Service Medal and Officer Quillan for the Community Service Medal.
Again, thank all of you very much. We really appreciate it. I know you've had some long evenings this year, so we're very grateful you allow us to come in here and do this. Madam Mayor, if you'd like to come up here as well as a safety director and present these medals, that would be wonderful. I think it goes without saying that, as chief, this is probably one of the greatest privileges that you have in this job, is to be able to acknowledge and reward the services of some of our employees and the great work that they do. First up tonight, I think we'll do Sergeant Stover. So Sergeant Stover, if you'd like to come on up here real quick. I'll make sure I have the right citation here. On Wednesday, November 6, 2024, Sergeant Stover was requested for mutual aid from Mogadore at a street down there for a suicidal female with a gun. He quickly responded, and he found that the female had barricaded herself in the bathroom with a gun. He quickly assisted the Mogadore officers by requesting our own officers for additional assistance, setting up a perimeter, and he had the Mogadore EMS stage nearby for medical support if needed. Even though the bathroom door was in line with the front door of the residence, which put him at a tactical disadvantage, he began communicating with the female from the front door. She was clearly in a heightened and volatile emotional state. There were times during the conversation when the female could be heard trying to manipulate the gun in the bathroom. However, he maintained a calm demeanor, displayed a genuine concern for the female's well-being, and showed great compassion for her situation. This allowed him to build a rapport with the female, which calmed her down, and he talked to her for approximately 55 minutes before she voluntarily came out of the bathroom unarmed. She was then transported to the hospital where she could get the help that she so desperately needed that night. For his actions on November 6, it led to the peaceful resolution of a highly chaotic and volatile situation and undoubtedly saved the life of a citizen. These acts are in keeping with the highest standards and values of the Talmadge Police Department, and they reflect great credit upon Ralph Stover and the City of Talmadge. We're very grateful. While they get a quick picture, I'll just remind everyone that Sergeant Stover is also the coordinator of our crisis intervention team, and the work that he does with the ADM Board and CSS and all the other community resources that we have out there to handle our mentally ill is quite remarkable. He does a lot on his own time, just out of the goodness of his heart, I think, and he loves it. It's something that is very dear to him, and when he came to us from Kent State University Police Department, he brought that experience with him. So this medal isn't just for that one moment in time, though it's well-deserved for that. It also represents years of commitment to crisis intervention.
Can we get a picture with you, too?
Of course.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
It is so... Let me just say it's also very awesome to look out here and see all of the support that we have from their peers, other employees. We got some kids here for Officer Quillan, which is very nice. So Dave, why don't you come on up here? Tonight, what we're issuing is a Community Service Medal, which is the first... It was created for us with a couple of other recognition medals that we have and some commendation bars, and this is the first-ever Community Service Medal that the police department has ever issued, and it really couldn't be issued to a more deserving individual. I think many of you here know of his work, that he does with our schools and our community, and it's quite extravagant. So let me go ahead and read the citation. I'll say a few more words, and then we'll get things moving here. So, "In recognition of your extraordinary dedication and unwavering commitment to serving our community far beyond the call of duty, we award you the Community Service Medal. Throughout your career, you have generously given your time to the citizens of Talmadge, Talmadge City School District, and serve the interests of citizens and groups beyond our borders. Many of these hours have come at the expense of your personal time and resources. Your selfless service, countless hours of volunteer work, loyalty to the community, and genuine compassion have positively impacted many lives and are a shining example for everyone. Whether through discussing the safety of the children of Talmadge, coordinating the annual Shop of the Cop event, participating in a Philly Cruiser event, Special Olympics torch runs, and all while mentoring the youth of Talmadge and supporting those in need, your proactive approach and intentional decisions are of great benefit to our community. Service is sacrifice, and you clearly place service before self, making our community safer, kinder, and more connected. Your distinguished actions bring great credit upon yourself and the City of Talmadge and the Talmadge Police Department, and are in keeping with the highest traditions, values, and standards of the law enforcement profession." Thank you very much, Dave. I could have gone on and on about Dave. I've got a whole list of the things that he does here, but it would be too long.
That's enough. That's a lot.
That's why Andrew can get the right one.
I know, I know. I think we have a lot of children here from the schools to honor Officer Fong as well. Do you guys want to come up and get a nice picture with him? That'd be great. Let me get out of the way.
for the work that he did over a number of years in the Detective Bureau. He did not wish to be recognized, but he did come here tonight to support his fellow members. I would like to just read you a brief part of the commendation that went with his medal, if that's all right with you guys. "While serving as a detective and detective sergeant from November 2016 through October 2024, Sergeant Fairhurst's exemplary initiative in service brought positive regard to himself and the Talmadge Police Department. During his tour of duty, he investigated and participated in the successful prosecution of many notable cases, including a man who stole hundreds of thousands of dollars from his grandfather. He scammed numerous banks and credit card companies of over half a million dollars. He also investigated a Nigerian scam ring from Rhode Island, obtaining FBI collaboration to prosecute six suspects, and for that case and his work, he received recognition from the U.S. District Attorney's Office in Rhode Island. He federally prosecuted a sexual predator who extorted local women and sexually assaulted a juvenile. He obtained successful convictions of multiple suspects and rashes of burglaries and bank robberies in our city, even identifying a suspect from Great Britain who hacked social media accounts to extort suspects and coordinating the international investigation with British Royal Police to successfully prosecute that individual." In addition to some of the exceptional detective work that he did, he also served as a Deputy U.S. Marshal in the Northeast Ohio Violent Fugitive Task Force, where he received the Susan Graves Task Force Officer of the Year in 2021 for his work on multiple cases, including one time when they were out searching for a violent felon and a shooting occurred unrelated to who they were looking for. He quickly responded to that area, provided medical aid to the victim, obtained identifying information about the shooter, and that enabled officers to quickly get in there and apprehend the guilty party. During his tour as a detective, he also continued to serve the Talmadge Police Department as the use-of-force instructor and reviewer. He conducted countless training sessions and reviews, including the administrative investigation and review of an officer-involved shooting in 2023. You may also recall the department's social media post from May 2024, which highlighted Sergeant Fairhurst attending the STEP program, which is the Supervisor Training and Education Program through the Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police, and it's a months-long program where they learn leadership, and he graduated with honors and was elected his class president, which was done by his peers. His exceptional performance, work ethic, and initiative are in keeping with those high standards of the Talmadge Police Department and reflect great credit upon him and the city. So, well done. Thank you all very much. I hope I kept that brief.
Thank you very much, and just echoing, congratulations and thank you to Sergeant Fairhurst, Sergeant Stover, and Officer Quillan. Thank you all for all you do. All right. Next item on the agenda is our Moral Claims Commission appointments. There's three appointments this evening. These are for two-year terms. The first item is confirmation to the Claims Committee of Monica Crusoe. This was a recommendation by Mayor Kilway. And then, per the Applicable Code Section 155.01 with the creation and composition of the Moral Claims Commission, the Finance Chair is the one representative of council, and then there's one additional member of council, and I was respectfully asking for nomination to fill that other seat. So there will be three seats filled for a two-year term on the Moral Claims Commission. And point of order from the Law Director, do we need to do each appointment per vote, or could it be one vote per all three?
You can do a joint motion if you want, and then if it happened to not go through, then you could break it up if you needed to. You can do it all as one if you wanted to.
Would someone like to do a joint motion for the confirmations?
I'll make a motion to appoint Councilman Bolus as the third representative to the Claims Commission, and then I will make a motion to accept all three individuals to the Claims Commission. A second.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and just to clarify, the motion in a second are to confirm Monica Crusoe as a member of the community to the Claims Commission, to confirm the appointment of the Finance Chair, to fill one vacancy of council, and then council president to fill the second vacancy of council. All right. We had a first and a second? Okay, I guess we'll call a vote, sorry.
Yeah.
Mr. Rubino?
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. The Claims Commission appointments are accepted by a vote of seven to zero. And then, third item on agenda additions this evening, we have a vote on whether to hold or not to hold a hearing for the Sheetz liquor permit. Would Mr. Ignazito or Ms. Raber like to make a comment on this?
Good evening, council. We were notified just before the last council meeting that Sheetz is requesting a liquor permit for beer sales at their site for wine and mixed beverages and for alcohol sales on Sunday. They had also originally submitted for beer sales consumption on premise. They have since withdrawn that. You have email and the actual Ohio Department of Liquor Control system paper in front of you. After filing the permit, Sheetz discovered that sale of alcohol has not been approved at their future location in Precinct 4B. So where... And it is my understanding from talking with their outside council that they do intend to circulate petitions for a precinct vote for alcohol sales at its future location. They have missed timelines for the May ballot, so they would have to do their petitions now and meet the guidelines for November. Their anticipated opening date from their outside counsel and not their construction personnel is probably late September or October. If they file for... If they put the ballot initiative on and it is approved by the precinct, it would probably be January or February of 2026 before package sales could be done there. So the form that we receive from the state, the legislative notification form that you have, what that only gives is an option to request a hearing or to not request a hearing. If we were to request a hearing, really, the only basis of the grounds for that hearing would be that it's not authorized at that location. My understanding, when Sheetz does, just to clarify, when Sheetz does circulate a petition, it will only be for their location. That could change, but that's my understanding from talking to their outside counsel. So this form really isn't appropriate for the situation, because most of the time, it is already a wet location, and they can sell alcohol. If we go... If we decide, if the council decides to vote for a hearing, it would really be pro forma, and our only point would be that liquor sales are not authorized. The State of Ohio Divisional Liquor Control will not issue a permit for a site that has not been approved at that location by the city and then the precinct. So the... If we do not have a hearing, what would happen is that the Ohio Department of Liquor Control will hold on to Sheetz's permit and keep it on file until after the election and pending the outcome of the election for the ballot initiative for alcohol sales at their location, then they would issue the permit, which would still not be until January or February. So, in essence, in this case, it's not going to have a determining outcome whether we have... It's not going to have a determination on the outcome. There is currently liquor sales right across the street at Duke and Duchess that was voted on in November 2008, and it was done as a site-specific location. So the choices for a vote are to have a hearing, which would basically be pro forma, or to not request a hearing, and the Sheetz will continue along their path. Sheetz is going to continue along their path regardless. They do intend to request to sell alcohol through the process I just explained. So what questions do you have?
Question for Law Director Raber. Is there any benefit for you going to Akron to talk to them?
I think, based on the information that we have, I would only suggest that you request a hearing if you don't think it's appropriate that they be able to sell the carryout beer or wine in the eventual... With the idea that eventually they would have all the appropriate underlying permissions, it sounds like they will not get that permit until they go through that whole process anyway. So if you... There's really no purpose other than to state what they already know, which is that they don't have that underlying permission. So my recommendation would be to only request the hearing if we actually are opposed to them having the carryout sales. And again, they have eliminated the D1 on-consumption premises request, so that's not before us. So if that were to come back, we could always reevaluate that at that time.
I would defer to the ward councilman, if she's got anything to add, or?
I guess the only thing that I would say is that in the discussions surrounding the zoning for the Sheetz and all the concerns from residents that I heard personally, I don't think that the liquor sales was mentioned as an issue. I haven't gotten feedback other than that, so I guess it's going for a vote, whether we have the hearing or not, I'm correct in that, so that our residents will have the opportunity to make their voice heard in that regard. So I don't see a need to have a hearing, personally.
And they could have the right to do a special election and not wait till November, but they would have to front that cost?
I don't know the answer to that. It sounds like that wasn't given to them as a possibility, and I don't know if they would want... I don't know what those rules are. I'm sorry, I didn't look into that.
That has not been discussed at all by Sheetz. Their outside counsel said that his target date is a November election. He was still in consultation with the Sheetz Corporation, the owners.
So, based on that, do I have a motion to not request a hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to not request a hearing. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
We have a vote of seven to zero to not request a hearing. Thank you. Next up, moving on to item nine, reports of administrative officers. Mayor Kilway.
Thank you. We've been very busy, but I'm going to make this as brief as possible, just to spare you anything at this point in time. Those of you that were on the strategic planning team did know that we did unveil the framework for the strategic plan. I'm sorry, I'm jumping over my words here, and I'm very happy we're going to be able to unveil that at the State of the City address. That will be... We will be doing it for the primetimers on March 18, and then the chambers hosting the event as well on March 19. So I would love to see some of you there. I hope everyone received the updated Talmadge circular. I do have a visual effect right here. I think it turned out very, very well. We did add our recreation events into it. I've had a lot of positive feedback from that so far. I think it's a great issue. I want to thank Andrea Kidder for all of her hard work on it. She really... Her and Tish really did a lot on this, as well as Jessica Simons did an immense amount of work with the rec pages in here, which I think the rec department has like eight pages in here, so I think that's fantastic. They really did a great job. Other than that, other city events, MACA memberships are still on sale right now. They open up to non-residents on February... Or on March 15. Family Fun Night is tomorrow from 6:30 to 9:30 at the Rec Center. Also, the Talmadge wheelchair basketball team is going to be playing for their state to retain their state title on Saturday at the Kent State MACA Center at 5 o'clock, if anyone's interested in attending that. And I did have my after-hours with the mayor from 4 to 6 o'clock and had some nice conversations with some of our residents, and it was... conversations with some of our residents, and it was really great. Other than that, I do have, Helene Hussing did want me to mention to everybody that we do have some significant progress expanding our broadband access. Summit Connects, part of the countywide fiber initiative, will begin conduit installation on North Avenue, starting from Monroe Falls border to Howell Road and then Kent Drive. Additionally, AT&amp;T will begin their fiber project in the Ridgewood condo area and the South Ridge Cliff Streets. Residents may notice informational yard signs and door tags. Both of these projects are slated to start next week, and these are the beginnings of larger, more vital projects that will enhance connectivity in our community. So please be on the lookout for that as well. And pending any questions, I'll end my report. No questions? Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, our Director of Administration.
Good evening, Council President Bolus and council members. Just a short report tonight. We do continue to actively search for an economic developer. We've held phone interviews. The position is still posted, and so we continue that. We're also searching, have a job opening for an administrative assistant, both in the administration and also working in civil service. So if you know anyone or anybody who's listening, those applications are online at our website. We continue to conduct our business retention and expansion visits. We visited, since we last met, Newell, which is a large warehouse for Rubbermaid and a whole host of other companies under Newell. And we also visited Kenda Tire Martin Wheel on West Avenue. As you know, that's for sale. We wanted to become familiar, to visit with them again, see the property. I had not been out there since I rejoined the city, and so we went out with insight in the mayor, and so we have a better understanding of what we can target for that area. While it's for sale, we don't have a hard date yet on when they will be completely out and operating in the JED. Pending your questions, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I see the Director of Public Service is absent this evening. Anyone have any report or PowerPoint?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right. Next up, Director of Finance.
Thank you. I would just like to announce for the public and for whoever's watching, reminder that city income taxes are due April 15th. So the Regional Income Tax Agency's website, readohio.com, has a plethora of resources and ways you can file your taxes. If anybody has any issues, they can also stop in City Hall, and people from my office are willing to assist.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Director of Finance? All right, next up, Director of Law, Ms. Abner.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder, I was able, I did send everyone a reminder email about making sure you take your Sunshine Law training, which is required once in your term for either you or a designee. So I gave links for that information. And also just a friendly reminder that Ohio Ethics Commission reports will be due here shortly, so remember to get those in. End of report.
Is there, is there an onsite ethics training as well this year? Is that an annual or?
That's not annual.
Okay.
We've hosted it every few years, we'll host it.
Okay.
But you can look online. They, they will come to various locations around town, I mean around the state, actually. So you can always look for those.
They also have online train, I mean if you're interested, they do have online trainings that you can sign up for, because I'm required to take some of them for, as a finance director.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director of Law? All right, we will move into reports of standing committees of council of the whole. First up is our Planning and Zoning Committee with Councilwoman Gutman.
Thank you. I will call Planning and Zoning to order. We have before us tonight a second reading ordinance 2025-32 with a public hearing set for 3/13/25 at 7:01 PM, imposing a six-month moratorium on acceptance of any zoning application for vape and/or smoke establishments or shops within the city of Tomage and providing for immediate enactment. Are there any comments on this this evening?
If I may just, the reason that we are requesting the moratorium, we had started to receive inquiries asking about these types of shops and whether we had any specific regulations, and we've started taking a closer look and hearing that there's, in the news, that there's a lot of other communities that are issuing moratoriums or putting additional regulations on that are more similar to the cannabis industry-type zoning regulations. And so we think it's appropriate to put a moratorium on so we can pause, take a look, and see if there are some potential additional regulations that we might want to put with regard to zoning requirements on these types of shops.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Any, we'll just leave that then. And anything else for Planning and Zoning this evening? Seeing nothing, I'll close committee.
Thank you. Next up is our Finance Committee. That's Chairman Pavlik.
Thank you. The Finance Committee deals with budget appropriations, reappropriations, bonds, franchises, investment expenditures. Currently, we have five first reading ordinances tonight. First up is ordinance 2025-33, expressing the intent to sell unneeded, obsolete, or unfit vehicles and equipment and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Director of Public Service Roar. Since he's not here tonight, Mayor Kilway, do you have anything to add or?
I cannot speak to this. This is just excess equipment that we've replaced or no longer need. We will put these out on, it's an internet site called GovDeals to sell them, so.
Perfect.
Oh, sorry. I think I turned off. This is standard. We usually do it a couple different times a year to get rid of excess equipment.
Okay, is there any questions from council? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt ordinance 2025-33.
Thank you. Is there a?
I'll second it.
Second, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Okay, with that, ordinance 2025-33 passes with a motion of seven to zero. Next up is ordinance 2025-34, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the lease purchase of a leaf collector through the inter-local purchasing system cooperative purchasing program, providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Director of Public Service, Mr. Roar.
This is part of the budget. We, so, and actually, I would request if we could adopt this in the next ordinance at first reading tonight, I apologize for not mentioning that early, or just to speak, I will be combining these two purchases into a lease purchase on a five-year financing for, for both of those. But they're all in the budget. This was prepared for, it's just, because it's over $50,000.
Okay, so, okay. Is there any questions from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-34?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes. Okay, with that vote, ordinance 2025-34 passes with a motion of seven to zero. Next up is ordinance 2025-35, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the lease purchase of a berm mower through the state purchasing program and providing for immediate enactment. Director of, the sponsor of this ordinance is Director of Public Service, Mr. Roar. Hearing from Ms. Gilbreth earlier that this was in the budget and we would like first adoption, is there anything that you want to add?
No, that's, you got it.
Hearing, is there any motion or any concern from council floor? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-35?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Nick Rabino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Okay, with that vote, ordinance 2025-35 passes with a motion of seven to zero. Next up is ordinance 2025-36, authorizing the purchase of a police cruiser, outfit equipment through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Director of Finance, Ms. Gilbreth. Ms. Gilbreth, do you have anything to add?
Just typically, we don't spend over $50,000 on this, but because we were awarded the grant to purchase the police cruiser, we're kind of buying an extra police cruiser this year, so we were able to purchase those through a cooperative purchasing program.
Thank you. Is there any comments from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-36?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there a further discussion from council floor? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabino.
Yes.
Okay, with that vote, ordinance 2025-36 passes with a motion of seven to zero. Next and last is ordinance 2025-37, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of 28 Southwest Avenue from James M. and Diana C. West, appropriating necessary sums and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. Mayor, would you like to add anything to this?
No, we discussed this last week, and it's, I think it's a great asset to our city. We will be able to add it on to, it's continuous to other property that we already own, and I think it'd be a great asset for future economic development. I just want to thank council for being agreeable to this.
Question?
Yes.
Would this be put in the city's name or would it go to the CIC or?
It'll be put in the city's name.
Okay, all right.
Because there's not going to be any type of a rental on it, so.
Perfect, thank you. Is there any further questions for the mayor? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-37?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Okay, with that, ordinance 2025-37 passes with a motion of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And that concludes all the ordinances. Is there anything else that needs to be brought forward to Finance Committee this evening? Hearing none, I will close committee, thank you. Thank you. Next up is our Personnel Committee, Councilwoman Sippa.
Personnel Committee deals with personnel, labor relations, insurance claims, rules of council, and state statutes. This is third readings of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 2024-75, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 2764 and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Mayor Kilway.
Good evening. In regards to this ordinance for a local 2764, I would request that you table it until June 26, 2025. We have a fact, fact-finding date in May, and then this will give us enough time to, after fact-finding, to get the report, which takes a month, and then to ensure that we have agreement with the actual contract when we get the technical format of the contract.
There any questions? Do we need to make a motion to table this? Can I have a motion to table this?
So moved.
We're going to want to state the specific date, too. The motion to table it till June 26.
I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2024-75 until June 25, 2025. 26.
Have a motion?
Second.
So ordinance 2024-75 will be tabled to June 26.
2025.
25. Okay, ordinance 2024-76, authorizing the mayor to enter into, oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over your job, Sue, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-75, being held until June 26, 2025, has passed. Ordinance 2024-76, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, consisting of Tomage Patrol Officers and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor, Mayor Kilway.
Good evening, once again. I would request a motion that you table this until April 10. We have a mediation with federal mediator scheduled for March 5. And then for, the additional time is to ensure, while we would be able to get the contract, if we agree upon it at mediation, to get it technically correct and then to have the ordinance. So I would request that you do this for ordinance 2024-76 and 2024-77.
Have a motion to postpone ordinance 2024-76 until April 10, 2025? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Ordinance 2024-76, has two motions to postpone it till April 10, 2025. Sue, can you please call it?
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Ordinance 2024-77, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, consisting of Tomage Police Sergeants and Tomage Police Lieutenants and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Mayor Kilway, and we would like a motion to postpone this until April 10, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Sue?
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rabino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-77 has been approved to be held off till April 10, 2025. Vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
Are there any additional items for personnel? Hearing none, personnel closes.
Thanks very much. Next up, we have our Safety Committee, Councilman Rabino.
Thank you. Call the Safety Committee to order. The Safety Committee deals with disaster services, communications, fire, paramedics, police, and health. We currently have no legislation before us. Does anybody have anything to add for the Safety Committee? Hearing none, I will close committee.
Thank you. Next up is our Community Issues Committee with Councilman Roy.
Yes, I'd like to open up Community Issues. Community Issues Committee deals with Parks and Recreation, civic affairs, and liaison between council and the Recreation Board and intergovernmental affairs. We have nothing in front of us tonight. Is there any additional items?
I just had one question for Parks and Rec, specifically around the installation of the bathrooms at MACA Park. If there's any progress update on that project? I think they were working with the engineer, engineers last we checked.
Yeah, we'll get you that information. I know we had some discussion, but I don't have that date on the top of my head, but I know that they're going to be working on in the spring.
Okay.
We need a, okay, roll call, yeah.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-77, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, consisting of Talmage Police Sergeants and Talmage Police Lieutenants, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Mayor Kilway.
And we would like a motion to postpone this until April 10, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Sue?
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Ordinance 2024-77, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, consisting of Talmage Police Sergeants and Talmage Police Lieutenants, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Mayor Kilway. And we would like a motion to postpone this until April 10, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Sue?
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-77 has been approved to be held off till April 10, 2025. Vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
Are there any additional items for personnel? Hearing none, personnel closes.
Thanks very much. Next up, we have our Safety Committee. Councilman Rubino.
Thank you. Call the Safety Committee to order. The Safety Committee deals with disaster services, communications, fire, paramedics, police, and health. We currently have no legislation before us. Does anybody have anything to add for the Safety Committee? Hearing none, I will close committee.
Thank you. Next up is our Community Issues Committee with Councilman Roy.
Yes, I'd like to open up Community Issues. Community Issues Committee deals with Parks and Recreation, civic affairs, and liaison between council and the Recreation Board and intergovernmental affairs. We have nothing in front of us tonight. Is there any additional items?
I just had one question for Parks and Rec, specifically around the, the installation of the bathrooms at Maca Park. If there's any progress update on that project? I think they were working with the engineer, engineers, last we checked.
Yeah, we'll get you that information. I know we had some discussion, but I don't have that date on the top of my head, but I know that they're going to be working on in the spring.
Okay.
I, I know that there was a date floating around as to when they would possibly be done. Again, I don't have that off the top of my head. Sorry. We'll get it to you, though.
Yeah, and in some conversations also with the Little League, I know they're, they're also planning a construction of the dugouts over there. So they're trying to, kind of plan that accordingly with the project.
Okay. All right, yeah. Like I said, I'll get that date for you. We'll send you guys all an email, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Any additional items? And I will close committee. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, our Public Service Committee with Councilwoman Epstein.
Thank you. I call Public Service to order. The Public Service Committee deals with streets, highway, sidewalks, buildings, and improvements, water, sewer, electricity, gas, energy resources, recycling, waste, and trash. We have nothing before us this evening. Are there any additional items from council?
I, I do have one question, and I know Service Director, Mr. Rohr, is not here tonight, but where we stand or when the report for the traffic study on Nottingham will be done for the stop sign?
We received that, and I have an email. I can forward it to you tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you send it to everybody? Yeah.
Yeah. Do we have, does it warrant it? Do we know, or does it warrant?
It doesn't warrant the stop signs, but there is some marking and striping improvements that can be made that we're going to get to this spring.
Okay.
And I think some, not a stop sign, but some enhanced signage.
Enhanced signage and striping, yeah.
Okay.
You send, make sure you send it out to everybody, please.
Yes, I'll forward it to all of council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Are there any other additional items? Hearing none, I close committee.
Thanks very much. Moving on to item 11, reports of special committees. Council Operations Committee, I have no report this evening. Any, any announcements? We have none? All right. We will now go into executive session, RE, pending litigation. I will need a motion in a second, and then I'll state the time.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session for pending litigation.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second to be excused to executive session, and that's at 7:52 PM.
And for the public, we have no other items on the agenda this evening, so after we come back, we'll plan to adjourn.
We need a, okay, roll call, yeah.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Christine Sippa.
Yes.